All right, we're telling me to order. It's August thirty first, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Uh, we're at Oak Ridge City Hall for a special session of the council. First order of business is.
Sorry.
Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Mayor Ketchin.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. Item four is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda that any counselors have. additions, directions, or adjustments in the room. I don't see anybody. In the room. I have just one small one. I'd like to swap nine point one and nine point two. I would like to get the business of the city council out of the way. And then transition into the uh sort of listening mode for the regulation of uh food trucks and portable restaurants. So we'll do the approval of the minutes first. Other than that, it stays the same. So next on is public comment, and if if you hear a comment about the regulation of food trucks for or um portable toilets, I'd actually hold that until we get to that part of the session. There'll be no time limits. You can talk as long as you want. And we're here to listen. So if does anyone have any public comment other than about that particular agenda item in the room? And I don't see any public. Is there a public comment?
There's one mine.
Okay, anyone on the Zoom platform, public comment? Nothing heard. Um, moving on to mayor comments, announcement, and proclamations that you hear. I'd like to remind council and interested citizens of the city council vacancy. The application closing date is Monday, September fourth at five P M. It is a federal holiday. However, you can slide it through the door. Um, and if it's in the room by the when they open up the next morning, we'll accept it. Also, of interest, uh, on Thursday, September seventh, we'll start one hour early uh because of the interviews. We're going to interview, and that'll be public, open to the public. If you want to sit through the interviews, and that'll be done right here and also on the Zoom, right, Ben? Okay, uh, then at six, we'll transition into the city council meeting. Um, this position, if you're interested, is that you would start immediately, and the term end date would be January second, twenty twenty-five, the next regular election, uh, when that starts. This Friday, tomorrow, first Friday artwork, art block uptown, so encourage everyone to come on out and uh and see the artwork of our local artists and others. And in addition, also tomorrow is an open house at your Oak Ridge Library. Uh, and they have one hundred and twenty-five new children's books courtesy of the Pilgrim Foundation. So come on and check them out. And they also, I believe, Dr. Belusion will be here doing a magic show. Might be kind of fun. I don't know. Ten thirty is what it says here. So I don't know when the magic show starts, but I would assume sometime around there. Uh, that's all I have for mayor comments. Any council comments or announcements?
Um, we uh received the feasibility study grant for the bridge. Buried over to a little. Um, it's for forty thousand dollars. Um, then pretty much the student grant is one, if it all work.
And that's that's the railroad spur. Yeah, with both including both of the uh the bridges.
It's for the uh main bridge.
Okay, the big bridge, but yeah, okay. I think the other ones are done, been done. That's it. That's great news. Yeah. The other counselors. Okay. Um. No consent agenda today. Uh, we're down to business from the city council. James, nine point two, the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder, we need to pass these minutes because during the city council meeting, uh, we approved the letter to the secretary, uh, it's a good one. Audit by an action letter, so. That means attached to the letter showing that it's approved by the council. Maybe uh one request to change. On council, so it's up to date. But you only need to press the change obviously.
Okay, no air motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of August seventeen.
Hey, still your second?
My second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Kenyon. Next is by Council Hallit. Any discussion? Nothing heard. Um, Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchin.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
All right, we carries. Moving on to nine point one, which is the city council listening session to discuss potential mobile food units and portable restaurant ordinances. So I'm going to hand it over to Rick, I believe, who's going to be introduced this, and he also has a public comment regarding this. Um, Rick, how do you want to handle any live public comment? Do you want to just recognize a hand whenever they pop up?
Yeah, we'll be we'll be monitoring Zoom and uh you've got a part of that thing this year.
Okay.
So.
Over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so welcome to our listening session, recording here for you all. Um, we do have goals tonight and some things that are not goals tonight. Um. Change, reading justice. So um, our goal is to just gather input. We put out some draft ordinances that uh we basically saw from cities that have more resources than us, more input than us. Uh, these came from city of Albany. They did the same thing about a year ago, and they were it was quite the process uh. So they did most of the work for us. We sold our Albany's, changed names around, changed the numbers around, and that's what we have today. It's not our goal tonight to actually iron out a new ordinance. Again, this is just for input. Um, so moving forward, after tonight's meeting, um, our next steps will be compile all the input. Then we revisit the ordinance through what we've collected tonight and for the next week, because we're leaving this open for a week. And then we'll create our next draft, and then we'll go revisit it again. Um, one thing I wanted to say is uh processes like this are not linear. They are iterative, and as you can see, what it means iterative is we start at one point, you started with we which we have identified a problem or we consider your problem, our current mobile food vending ordinance is uh archaic and it's it it it's uh not the best. So we moved to um the planning phase of it. We came up with these ordinances that we sold from other communities. And now we're asking for inputs. We'll take that input and we'll go back to the start again. And then we read, we adjust the proposed ordinance. And that's why this is an iterative process. It is not start to finish. It is more circular, and then hopefully we go around circles three times, and then come out with a product that has a lot of input. So um I want to make sure that everyone's aware that this is just for input. Um. And we have two ways to participate. I'm going to go over the Zoom way first. So if you're waiting for. There we go. If you go to our website, on the main page, you see the upcoming events that I circle there. You click on that link. It will take you to the information for tonight's meeting. If you go to tonight's meeting, there we go. Uh, we have the all the paperwork you see plastered to the walls is also I it's also there labeled uh mobile food vending presentation and portable toilets presentation. We have the portable toilets on this wall, mobile food vending units on this wall. What you find on our website is exactly what we see here. So for next week, if anybody thinks, hey, you know, during that meeting, I really wish I would commented on that, we still have an opportunity to do so. Um, again, they are, you see in the bottom left-hand corner, those are the two documents that you see they plastered to the wall. And then um, if you're on Zoom, please feel free to download the presentation documents, review them now. I know that's kind of a quick turnaround. So you know, the next couple of days, they are very text heavy, which makes this for more of a complicated process. So we'll be taking comments for the next week. After that, I will start compiling them, and then we start that iterative process all over again. So for those of us in the room, how this is going to work is, for example, uh, we have a public comment that was submitted by a citizen. So I'm going to use that as our example. So it's using the diocese or the that's where the public comment comes from. So a public comment from uh Jen Hancock of seven, six, two, seven, Sixth Garden Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon, nine seven six three. As a mobile unit who is licensed in Lake County, I'm opposed to more rules being applied due to one establishment who is teetering on legal food carts to start with. If the city wants more money for me to operate on private property, that's yes. He wants his own areas that I can pay a fee and operate yearly. Awesome. You deemed of this allows parks to set up on public property within certain hours and times for a small yearly. Already be licensed and have worked working audits and inspections done by Lake County Environmental Health, who raised a license fee on us for the next year by a hundred dollars. Address the border policy being used by one citizen who was complaining about them and move on. This is favoritism to a resident we all know. Is being easily put in her place versus charging small businesses who are not making much money here and providing services to the citizens by offering food. Please stop taxing anyone who is trying to live, make a living wage. We are all struggling. A new cost to small businesses will hurt us. Thank you. So that is a public comment. So I'm going to I'm going to kind of break that up a little. We have Council Charman here has our picky notes, which uh will be placing around the room. So what we'll be doing is um just from one line on this, if you want the money for me to operate um if you want more money for me to operate on private property, that is yes. So that piece is kind of identified, and you'll see these gold number. So that would be number twenty-two. So I'm hoping we will all do is grab a pen, write twenty-two. And then your comments. And put it really, you know, put it here somewhere. Oh. And then our next comment is um, I probably certain hours and time for a certain hours and times. I think that is a zoning issue. So our zoning is, I know that you'll have to come sign numbers. I apologize. Uh, that's thirty-seven. So we write thirty-seven and then the issue. And that can go right by thirty-seven.
Uh, Rick, I have a question. Does uh what's here match exactly with the ordinance that?
The only difference is these are numbered, and the ordinance went out earlier. It's not all the cases. But if you want these exact documents, they are on the uh website.
That's fine. I was just wondering if I could follow along with the number you just called out, and like, I didn't see it in there.
You could.
Thirty-seven.
Relatively, yeah. So let's see, um, address supportive party being used by one citizen. So that is over here, and then that will be a be fifteen. Fifteen on. For a city council meeting, and I I totally understand that. The advantage of doing it this way is I'm hoping that we can all stand up, mingle around the room, sat amongst each other on what the relationships are. And then for those of us who are kind of uncomfortable, they don't want to raise their hand, that this provides an opportunity to still leave us comments without having to be the one in the room having office. So we're going to leave you, and I have a bunch of manuals. And if you have more comments, it will fit on a safety note. We also have these around them as well. Please feel free to write on them. Um, if your comment isn't to a number, and you don't know your number, feel free to put it anyways. Those who just stare, if you come across and you see it, like, you know, all four of those, you're located in a manager, a lot of appropriate servicing, it's like, well, you know, okay, I don't know if I like that much. So it's a forty. Let's do the plan in your favor, put the forty, post it on the wall. So unfortunately, these are so text heavy, um, it's going to be a lot to go through. So that being said, um, I would uh encourage you all to get up, mingle, sit amongst yourselves. I do know that we have some people in here that this absolutely affects, and we definitely want your inputs. So that being the case. We have a box of pins right over there, but I just actually, maybe so kind of last, last side box panel over.
But I like this method. Ready? That's a good idea.
We also have, we also have here privacy. You put your name, your email, phone number, whichever you prefer, and I have a little box that says uh keep me updated. You check the box, keep me updated. I will include you in all the information going out. That will definitely make sure that you're a priority of being invited to these types of meetings. They posted on uh they're posted on online, the posts were all placed in posts. But understandably, if you check the box, I will be contacting you with updates that will also make it more easy in communication. So without further ado, uh, comments or uh
uh, check out what's on the walls and and make any comments. When we think we've exhausted all that, we'll see if there's anybody that wants to actually make a public comment for that question.
Yeah, so. And then, yeah, we do have a comment section at the end.
But this usually works better for these type of iterative processes.
Do you want comments and questions? I'm just curious if people have.
If you have questions, feel free to write them. Yeah.
Okay.
And then and then we can respond back to them.
So the idea is kind of to be more focused on each item.
Correct. This gives us an opportunity to.
I like it.
And if any of you came to our H and A or T G M, you found someone out that.
Can I ask you a question? Absolutely. What?
So when when.
Let's say there's a new. How does that impact? Yes.
The way I am treated reminds me of this is the ordinance that got placed on. Many spots. The ordinance cannot apply to that.
Some so.
Oh, yeah.
Essentially, yeah.
So I wonder if that's true for all ordinances. Taking on to more depth.
Yeah, it's like.
It'd have to be something that's written to your house.
Yeah. I think because I'm seeing Chad and Teresa arrive. I mean, just like, that's my problem with this whole thing.
Yeah.
It's sort of like. Question, why did you pick Albany?
Because they did the process.
Well, it seems like there's cottage groves, there's Quest Presswell.
So how I came across that is I who has recently gone through this type of work. And all these what came up. So it's like, how does this fit Oak Ridge stuff? It's a starting point. I'm not saying it fits Oak Ridge. That's what today is about. Fit it to it. Put in an hour, hack this win. That's the hard part. Um, anyway.
Put all your comments down.
Yes, please.
Because it's going to be a long process. And I can say for myself, I don't want to put anyone out of business, and I hope that the city feels the same.
Do. And it's like, I can understand a city like Albany's got a lot going on. They have a lot going on. That's a that's a larger.
Oh, yeah.
Do it make sense for them? Because they got all sorts of restaurants. There are no restaurants on the top. And thank goodness, we were able to find this place and sort of like get into it on a budget and 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 buy the place for people to work out of that didn't cost a fortune. And I think that's what makes food trucks so appealing. But once you get this kind of stuff, you know, that's sort of like, anybody comes thinking about coming to Oak Ridge to do business with all these hoots to jump. It's just less appealing. I'm not saying that they won't do it. I'm just saying it's less appealing. And it's like, I looked at like Presswell's like uh ordinance around this. I looked at Cottage Groves. I looked at La Pine, and it's like it's 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 very concise. And I'm not saying that there doesn't need to be like some sort of order. But this is ridiculous, you know? Why do you need to start with the most restricted? And then go down rather than start with the least and go up, you know, like. Anyway.
Can you point out the ones? Can you point out the ones that are oh, sure, very restrictive that really make it real difficult because you have that. Or highlight them just, I mean, just essentially.
What? Let's see. I have my hard copy that I was looking at.
Yes, it's uh.
Yeah, it's it's forty-nine. I don't know. MFU standards. All this stuff about table on in. I mean, who cares? I mean, it's like.
This one twenty-six.
It's twenty-six point oh four. Okay. I don't know why I still.
Yeah. I remember all the slides, so it's there. It's like, another issue is like, is this even a project? You know, like, what really gets me. I'm not, you know, I'm not worried about our stuff. Because something tells me that this doesn't apply to stuff that's already there. I mean, that would take a dash. It's just putting new business people. This is. Yeah. Which is one person. We're not going to have an extra expense. One person complains. If I complain about the cone. Are we going to do a whole question about this? How is on the sidewalk? There are no parking signs. You know, like, it depends if you make over ten thousand dollars. Make over ten, I think you have to. I will do my best to go like.
Especially the the really difficult for business owners. For food trucks.
And that's obviously relying upon that.
Huge thing all over.
For ten forties or anything else.
The activity.
Nine people on the town.
No more chat.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm such a different label. As far as like the framework study.
All of twenty-six.
It sounds like what he's talking about.
I know, that's why it starts here.
Well, right here.
I, you know, I don't have an answer for you.
Uh.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be something. I don't see the parallels there, but you know. Well, here we're going to have to have. Can't stick to. Yeah. You know, I mean, if your purpose is to ban. They're available. This is where the selling department here is anywhere within those uh, you know, and you're not going to get a directed space. Right. And if it's from the room, there isn't, then fine. Something I rejected.
Do you have copies of that, Candy?
I I have to dissect it out of the book, but yeah.
Oh.
Yes. Yeah, I I mean, I do have, I'm trying to, we're going to us online, my.
That's a talented change. Yeah, it's it's been brought. For bathroom. Well, the one over in Diamond was fifty fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, that to me would be a good solution. They know they complain about smells or, well, not even, you know, whatever it is.
I mean, yeah, I was trying to think of what is it fifty feet? Is that the?
I guess. But something.
There's arms limits to where we can put it. We have, we own center or there'll be room here in city hall. Yeah, that's a good idea. Feel free to. Leave a note.
You have a question. Um. The uh food trucks has been a discussion. This is my first time in. Uh, has been a discussion about how many would it be allowed? Start having more because right now we have them over there by the. You know, and then there's so many twenty-one over. Um, turquoise, school bus thing. So is there any, because we bought the gallery, and so during the um peg and cast.
Yeah.
Um, we had people with the music right in front of us the whole day. We couldn't do business all day. So we're wondering if other of these things were allowed at different times of the year, we think it part turn in front of our business.
Yeah, and that's that's an important comment to make.
Being allowed.
In my mind, the city, and we haven't gotten there yet, but the city's going to have to determine for its place.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, make a comment that you don't want to inhibit other business by.
I just brought up that they have all kinds of booths and things. Well, that's separate. I'm talking about the issue that from what if this leads into more people opening a lot more businesses cheaper? And then then renovating these stores that need to be renovated. That's what we're trying to have.
So I think we need to be careful about where we allow the food trucks. And and make sure that we're not.
I just wonder where that would be because. There's also a house.
Yeah, I wouldn't want, I don't know. Residential labor. Maybe. No, it's a great comment.
That's pretty much my concern. Having a gallery.
And I think it'll be a difference. Regular, regular day. A lot of people expected.
I feel real too already.
Really don't.
It's just sitting outside. Because it was too far.
I mean, we could.
There's um.
Yeah. There'll be there'll be some uh.
Oh, just one note. One comment about. Their band that was playing at three o'clock. And yeah, two maybe six. Was a nice band.
Yeah.
It was loud. Uh but it was okay. But the bands that is after that one, they all got louder and by the time we got to the last band that was playing. At least since ten o'clock. Uh before that, maybe nine thirty or something. Uh it was so loud that I had an air conditioner on. A fan and TV turned all the way and it was inside my house and that's right over there in Oak Street. And I was probably two hundred, three hundred feet away. And it was in my room of the den. That was too loud.
Did you get a notification that they should have been afforded or were they not going to?
Well, the first band had a certain depth. Decibel level. The last three bands. It was, I couldn't hear the TV. It was so loud. I can only imagine what it was like. And then I went outside to see because all I could hear was the bass boom, boom, boom. I actually walked outside. They were singing. Couldn't hear the singing. It would, this is too loud.
Yeah, and there are there are limits when they put the application and say.
Control of them turning that up.
Um it was probably a problem on our part that we didn't have a decimeter.
They got away with it.
They did this time.
It was bad. I'm glad that they had to stop in eleven. See, it was bad. I mean, you've got an air conditioner making noise. And who was I supposed to talk to? I found out Amy that's down. I haven't been able to run into her to ask her who's gonna control that music level.
I mean, they they signed something when they applied, but uh as far as following us, it would be a silly thing. A sound you can figure out what does you know what decimal level.
Over to my house and buy you a house. There.
That would just jump up.
Well, I mean, like we have adopted. Are you waiting to talk to you?
No, I'm reading.
I've been reading this too. I I'm only here because I have a house right over here behind the bank. And Jackie recently moved the blue her bus onto the back end of the property. Where the bakery used to be and where she bought the other business properties next to hers. And then put a roof over all three buildings. And ran out of money for electricity and plumbing to finish her bakery. Then she moved down to Mildred. To prove to a bank that she could pay more than to. Finish her finances for that building and that was over five years ago. Uh and now I've been living there thirty years and all of a sudden I have this bluebird bus parked there. Uh. There's no money around and she's got this building. Uh and I heard voices and I heard the word kitchen mentioned. Like she's putting a kitchen in there and then I also heard somebody about.
Also.
Kitchen maybe. I don't want food truck within eighty feet of my living room window. Um I don't want people sitting out there when they should be inside from bill. There.
Maybe it's just parking at their.
Built the a kitchen and then moved us someplace else. Not when she's gonna hook up to the telephone. That's why I'm here tonight. Do we have a rule already on books that all common feet from a food truck to a residential house could be? Because I know there's one down the street here and Nancy's house is right across the street. So. Yeah, there's nothing on the books here in Oak.
Yeah, right now we have very little with with.
Because I know Nancy.
I saw her. I don't think that's other. That looks like one of them. Not a food truck.
It's not really a food truck. It's a bluebird bus. Yeah. But I'm afraid because I saw her. You know, and I heard the. So I have to be in the truck there.
It's not gonna. She's gonna build it because people do say, oh, it's food trucks. So that's why I'm afraid instead of getting one of those buildings that need to be renovated. Spend a whole year. And now.
She appreciates that I watch out for the property.
Yeah.
At the same time.
It's not good. Because I did walk past.
And I proved this group is sorry. Of course, Italian democracy. And I love her first one for great. And I proved that um and I didn't even discover it. I I've been tested many times. I never smelled it before. With that, and you know, and and she hasn't seen one of them in one week on that.
And I'm just wondering why.
Yeah.
One years. And now they're so.
Are you with the flying?
Yeah.
I love what you guys. Yeah, it's kind of. Yeah.
They complain about that.
I'm saying like we're right.
Like I do.
Yeah.
And I do understand people are broke and need to do something for money. Started a whole development.
Hey, James, can you answer the chat? No, if you know, it usually be UK the electrician.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, they used to have.
I was.
Those outlet stores.
The grass.
Three hundred dollars they give.
The cities. I think he's just confused.
But there's things like that. It's just. So I'm just saying.
Yeah, they did a bunch of mowing right before the um tree planting.
A year ago.
Uh that was.
A year ago.
No, he was out there.
Yeah, and I. In the truck port any times and I've never smelled it. No, and I'm afraid it's very clean. Yeah. I. For us that comes from. I go to Bend and I love to go to the food truck. There's one called the law. Bend and you go there and there's probably tiny food trucks that go around. In the center, there's a plaza. They do have a very nice um restroom, but it is restroom has it. Yeah, and it is a little um. So they had it for ten fifteen years whereas the food truck port here is that now that's been. So it's very new.
So if you make complaints. They will.
That out of state owner.
So the owner is here and he is working on getting registered restroom, but upwards of twenty thousand dollars to build that. So it's in the plan. I know the rest of the porta potty is a temporary solution, but it has been temporary. This is here too.
I was saying I'm like the way to.
Yeah.
Like if it's a problem, we care of this. Plane. And then they will cite the home or the property.
Yeah. I love provisions. Yeah, I love that. It's nice, especially if you have a family where your kids want this. I want this. I love that. Yeah.
But I'm just talking about.
When it gets.
To not make this a thing that is gonna usher in a poverty mentality.
Yeah. So am I.
You're talking about.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Immunity too.
Or am I hearing you don't wanna see food trucks.
He has.
Pulling up shop in front of someone's business anywhere. Yeah. And I I know.
I know the.
Portland and New York and big cities are famous.
I like I said.
And I can understand that. That would be frustrating when they're right out in front of your business and you've got a line of people.
Yeah, they're excited and they.
We can't do business.
Exactly. And then they get.
And we need quiet attention for people that they take. Not like it's so serious. Near but to actually enjoy it.
Well, that's what we're here to determine. So.
There anyway, my idea is not to jump the gun. Maybe think about it some more before.
What we're here to do is take input on what you. Your suggestion would be.
Yes, you have.
Oh, maybe maybe just as a thing like.
Or you can stand up and say. Or you can say it verbally once to get the people. Right toilets. But I'll make a.
I don't wanna do things that are to hinder businesses like them. I I like that idea. Um I think it's good.
And I'll make sure that.
Different places and then they goes. Yeah, driver. So I don't wanna do things to hinder them. And then also like Rick was saying, new people that come in. I would love to see more of that in the right places. I definitely agree. Having a big food truck parked in front of your business was not.
You don't actually like the idea of maybe getting a reason for it better.
Yeah.
Right now it's got all those uh flowers and sunflowers. Didn't seem to have much going on. So when you see a part that. Well, just doing arboretum type stuff. There's a lot more examples. So I think that would be a great thing to do in this spot.
A restaurant.
And right across the street. From my store, there's that wheel that the guy lives.
Yes. Really? See, I would.
Just.
I want the city to buy the field. My dream is. No, it was so sad. Splash pad is hard they have and it's basically there's water underground streets, different water features. But I would love to see that with lots of metal. And because it's on a hill, you gotta terrace seating where people can. Eat their lunch. You have a lot. You have a spot.
You have an open theater.
Yeah, but it would definitely be a large event, but that's my dream. I know for a long time, but I've seen a lot of other splash pads. Today one has a really nice. Oh, they do? But restrooms there would that would be an even better site for restrooms, but.
I made a note about.
And I don't know the person that owns the property, but I do know they don't. Yeah, I did. Every year we have to. They're needed up and we need to be in it. So it seems like they were offered this and we not. Maybe they would, but but yeah, I think and then I just, you know, having nice terraced seating there and guard and stuff for all the people that sees that much.
Me over in the corner.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I shared this with Tony too and she heard she had one of the same visions. Yeah. Yeah, she would love it because it would be right next to her. There's so many natural things we have that could be beautiful.
Yeah, like let's figure out how we can put in these fabulous enticements.
Yeah.
And then buy them. You know, the.
Yeah, I wonder how much it loses though. So there I've had another idea. So there's something called a main street area. You have to get two hundred thousand dollars for it. But it has to be the dog. So it must likely. For it. In the parking lot. They didn't really have a whole time. With the Uber or with the main street.
The dogs and the dogs. They get the dogs around and going because and they give back just so much money with this paper. That's where it makes sense. But I did try to be like that. Only that person had a grant to manage. And I can totally understand why she'd be comfortable with that because people are kind of with. But nobody uses that part.
It's really the beauty.
The first day it was over there was two part of the main street.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's two of those lady that create our buildings. Red and white building. She came down, stood and sat on the benches, but she didn't sit in the middle. She sat on the edge of the bench.
I mean, I don't know. I've been in other.
Guess it wasn't.
Well, they're attached now. Nobody goes down there and sits down. There is nobody in that.
So I'm wondering if something like that, whatever. Oh, yeah, because I've been told that building's been like this.
Years ago.
Snowmageddon.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
The banking wrote the personal letters when we fixed that out. There was three real soon and now that was.
Was there something that wants it? Because I know the lady.
He did. I heard there's a real show for poncho.
Poncho's in the green jacket.
Somebody told me he's interested in.
Senior siding.
We would be interested if we could.
Is there a price tag on this yet?
No, we can't.
Well, I know that I know the owner like like she would take some cheese. Her husband died around a circle.
The base. They just.
I wanted to take that little black house.
Yeah. Oh, the the little house on.
We have so little space in that building. If I got that, I'd fix it up and make it nice. And we have a little bit more space to live in.
Well, thanks for talking about.
Yeah, I'm Chrissy.
Hey, Chrissy, I'm Rob.
Lauren.
Rob. Rob Tarr.
Rob?
Rob Tarr. Rob Tart.
I have not. Well, come into our. I will try tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, I'm open from twelve o'clock, twelve to six.
But Thursday through.
Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
When the other stores are closed, so we all have to agree on. So are you guys involved too, like with Tony and the art? Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
We're looking at what we can do.
Yeah. Yeah, we're working on having. Really neat, but you guys have so many collaborating. Yeah. It's just a matter of getting the resources.
The difficulties, we're dealing with a bunch of artists, including myself, and we're not cut out for this. We just, you know, we 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 paint and we look at the rest of the world and think, oh, my God, how do I live here?
Well, that's the thing about this is I don't wanna make it harder for people to live here, especially people that are coming here to do food business. Like Rick, I do, you know, he's put a lot into the businesses. He bought that. That was a mess before he bought it. It was rundown. Tens of thousands of dollars to renovate that building and he's been doing this. So I just feel like. Well, I think they should have put a bathroom. What's that? I would assume somebody put a bathroom in. Yeah, and that means.
Have a good night.
Thank you for coming. I'm assuming Sissy is friends with them now. It's really incredible how much the art scene has grown here.
Every century. In every. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested. And for us to stand right now and get something about all this stuff, it's really hard. I I I I did that. It's really hard. If you if we were to start. That would be very much better.
Do you see what's happening on the screen? Hey, Mike, can you hear me?
So.
Ricky, you wanna transition to?
Yep, if you wanna transition to anything, because we weren't seeing any more notes going up.
We're talking to me, uh, mentioned these things, so I wrote them down, but I have no idea where we would go.
I'm just gonna put him right here and I would figure that out tomorrow.
Alright folks, uh, we're gonna transition now to uh any public comment. There's no time limits. You can be as informal as you like, just let us know who you are and uh you know, have your say. And again, this is listening, we're not, you know, we're just here to get input. These ordinances are just a direct ordinance. They may not, we don't even know if the ordinance will be adopted. We don't even know if we need to replace each. Regulation we have, but we'll find out and um they may change significantly from what you see up here. This is just a template. That we're willing to break things from or add things to, so in any case, any initial comments that someone would like to make?
Can you tell me of the ordinance or the condition for the designated zones that the currents are allowed to be here or not?
There is a theory as a part of this is does discuss them.
We actually have. I'm sorry, we haven't defined this.
We haven't defined it. There's a, there's a, there is zone in there. But as far as it's all definition of them, no, they're not defined.
And and I will tell you that I took one comment from uh one of the citizens that was. Well, if if so, we have to be very careful about where, you know, you you allow those in public property, on public property. We really have little control of private property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
So the one thing I do wanna read is that, and I said this and I just said it. The restaurant industry is very difficult, especially right now as we're just coming from COVID. Um, the fact that this isn't over to survive after COVID is pretty remarkable. I have talked to my health inspector and he told me literally if you survive this, you may not. However, when I got a call from um. Back a few days ago, and I was under the assumption that this was something that was popping in your closet and telling you, and you want to reiterate to me that, no. This is not Langtown doing this. This is over. It's surprising to me because it's making it much harder. In an area that is already difficult to make business. Like if he he definitely wanted to. Um, just reiterate to me, re- reiterate to me that this was not them doing this. It's about food safety. So to me, I would say it should be the priority tourism level. I'm not making it even more difficult than it's already in place with. Um, I know that we have worked our day off year round to check if people have employed in the bridge, which is already a difficult task to do. Um, to provide jobs for both. Um, and I'm not saying to like overlook everything, but I just have to keep this in um perspective. Um, I mean, there's several things here where I'm just looking at like, I mean, like I understand certain things, but I'm also like, we're a teeny tiny little army. So it's like. The whole, you know, I mean, we have two mainly roads, like and then most of this is residential, like, um, so. I I think I would, oh, definitely when we are talking about restaurants and like this to other businesses is a point. Do I want people coming in my business and using my bathroom? No, but if I'm providing a safe bathroom and the aspect, there is. Think that it is a good and reliable bathroom, then just trust that, you know.
There's not a lot exactly to refer to is the Langtown health inspector.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's and he's in charge of pretty much over to the events that happen over here.
Yeah, I understand they have a lot of regulations with regards to public health and. The and it is a city, uh, the ordinance would be a city uh ordinance, not a Langtown thing, correct? Um, and we're not here to make it more onerous on businesses, uh, but we do have to look out for and take input from residential citizens. If you, you know, and make sure that the food trucks aren't in places that are disturbing citizens, so. We just need to take a look at it, and like I said, we can strike as much as this as we need to. We can change this, and this is just a starting point.
Yes, thank you. So it's on the screen now, it was on the first.
Yeah, so maybe it it also needs to be, you know, this is what's the plan, whatever we come up with that's going to replace this.
That's our current ordinance.
Correct, yeah. That's why I think that we need to, that's why we think it's important that we do this.
I guess I I really don't understand that there's a requirement for two hundred seats on our spot. Was that required when? Then we had a food truck coming down.
This has been on books since two thousand four, because we're a complaint-driven process. Nobody's complaining.
Okay.
Question you is, we should only grow cattle or plant. I guess I, when I hear carp, it gets mobile with a jump ticket to the event.
Oh, I can answer that. We have a restaurant here that is not making enough money to be able to go out the world, so. Uh, hello everyone, my name is Chad, former of the Empire. Uh, I can tell you that all of these rules are gonna set down the whether five, six. New cards out of the full time, nobody is gonna be able to be able to comply in business with the current proposals. Uh, I understand that the one page is probably outdated. But that said, um, you guys should. Keep in mind that uh it's very difficult as a small business to survive.
Yeah, all the more reason we probably do need to look at the.
If you did implement, just what was already said, um, you're not inviting more business to a, so we've done new events since two thousand thirteen. And when we go to do the little things in the park, you don't gross very much money. You might get somebody from Eugene that's like, oh, hey, here's a new event. I'll try this one out. They'll come up once, realize they're not making a profit, then they come back. So uh making it more difficult for even outsiders to come in is gonna be.
Thank you.
Like I said, all events that we do that would not happen if we do not enable them. Because there's people who do not want any of that. And it is harder.
Did you come?
I do. I just have to ask, why would we bother making a new ordinance if our old or and current ordinances are only followed if. Somebody makes a complaint.
Because we have a complaint. That's how this all started.
Hopefully, hopefully, we we can. Give businesses from complaints, because if the fight comes and our man is forced, we, that's what we have to, that's what we have to.
No, that's not even possible because you can't go backwards and tell someone. Oh, our ordinance says you're only allowed to operate a hundred and eighty days out of the year, so now you have to close for the other two hundred and six, whatever.
That's our.
You can't.
Will we firm it up and and not having all of the requirements is not defensible.
Well, that's like saying uh. Like saying someone is assaulted, forced, and got away with it, so you can't post them the fifth night of the assault and send them to the god.
No, what I'm saying is why bother with having ordinances at all if we don't follow them to begin with? But see, that's wrong. We have to.
So you're saying we should be enforcing this at the moment?
I'm saying we should have been enforcing that at the time a business owner came to us and said they wanted to make a business in this town. Otherwise, it shouldn't even be applied to them at all if they were granted a business license outside of those parameters. And that's just, that's just wrong to allow someone to come into this town and invest hundreds or tens of thousands of dollars. And then wait for three or four years when someone comes along and said, hey, I don't think they're following this little thing, and then go say, oh, well, you're out. You weren't following it all this time because we never gave a shit to tell you you needed to follow it. We granted you permission to have a business here.
What are we supposed to do? Have an inspector, have a city employee standing? But that's not hot and cold. Well, maybe it will only be cold that day. But they fix it later. Are we supposed to be there at all times?
My point, my point right now is number, number two, the very top of the screen right there says mobile and flower vendors. Mobile food and flower vending may be allowed in all commercial zones for a period not to exceed. One hundred and eighty days during any one calendar year. And so when we give a business a license to do business. As a mobile unit.
We assume they're following all our licenses and all the O H A.
Can you, wait, wait, let me finish then. Can you say then that you assume that the mobile food carts only open a hundred and eighty days out of the year?
I I have no idea. I would assume so. I know, I know all of our restaurants. It's hard, I mean, you're trying to get through like a Tuesday.
Yes, I have, but. I don't know. It it's just, to me, it's it's just insane to um. Complete driven is ridiculous. Start with the beginning.
You're saying something that uh Lindsay and I have been going, you know, we're getting hard. There's no code enforcement. So it's like.
So why?
You know, and that's not an excuse for not following the law, I'm not saying. But there's no code enforcement, so what that shift in the talent doing is this complaint-driven thing, where the codes that are. In existence aren't uniformly applied.
Right.
So we've had complaints on our building. Then right down the street, someone does something, and since they don't have a complaint, they, you know, it's visible to everyone. That's trying to enforce the stuff on our building. Seems like we're in a spot. So the reason Lindsay and I are in here right now is because we feel like we're in a spot. And. I don't know how to fix this problem. But. I'm just saying it being a lot more complicated. And we're trying to come up with all this fancy code that nobody's gonna be enforced anyway.
You have to set the, you have to set the groundwork somewhere, though.
I agree with that.
You know, you can't just be like, well, we're just throwing all of it.
I agree with that, but let's make it as simple as we can, right? It's like, we had experience with this with the the building code in the up camps. And it's just like this visiting thing. It doesn't make any sense to any listeners, except for the peoples who complain that you're not doing it right. So it's like, what I'm asking in this whole process, I'm not asking for there not to be code. I'm asking for it to be really simple. And really you do follow, and doesn't prevent someone from coming into this thing. We have a full restaurant. We have a full restaurant. Right? I'm not worried about us. I'm worried about people coming into this town to to set up business. That 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 wants to see Oak Ridge as a friendly place to take the risk, to take a game, right? I mean, I agree with you. I don't want to be open for busy students, but what I don't want is it. We used to say that before, a twelve-year-old kid setting up a card table and making sushi with thirty people. Don't want that either. And the health department will not let that happen. I mean, the stuff that we had to go through in order to get that uh the 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 mobile unit going. Is there are pages and pages and pages of stuff you have to fill out. Zach has to come and do two inspections. There are all sorts of criteria to prevent accidents. So for the saving, they're sort of like double down. And and then, and then require that you have wheels on it and like all on the number, on the number of tables and all this stuff. It's like, it's gotta be simple.
And and I will tell you, you know, and thank you for that feedback, you know, that is the idea and and what not this, this is, you know, I think we do need to change the existing code, but for what was presented as a template, it's it's a starting point, make sure we don't miss anything, but we're happy to strike all this stuff and make it as simple and not onerous on businesses. Uh, and as you know, we're in the middle of revising the zoning uh, with with the people that came in and looked at it for us, so we'll be going through that process as well, and the idea would not to make it uh, as Byzantine as as you referred to as it was, so yeah, we want to simplify things, it it's easier to enforce and it's uh, you know, it's easier for us to remember what's actually in the code instead of having to go in there, yeah. But thank you.
Yeah, and there's another test too. This 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 goes to the fortifying. For some people, it is a problem, right? But fortifies are not a problem in this town. And we plan on getting rid of our fortifies, everybody can hear, okay? We use the fortify because we wanted to focus on actually do doing business. We're gonna build that. So I'm not talking about fortifies right now, because we want fortifying. I'm talking about it because it's another avenue for someone coming in that won't start a business, they can't put in a thirty thousand dollar sewer gap to get started. But once you put all this stuff in place, it may make sense to you. So you just, I can pay something like this, and and put it in the code. That might seem like the right thing to do, if someone coming in, it might use that as an avenue for it to get started, you can create it enough. And that's how we that fortify can enable us to get started. And it's not an ideal solution, but it's a solution.
And I said this to Rick and to James, and this is one reason why we're so um, upset right now is that it was in one line, ten point one, staff report on support of whole restrooms and mobile food vendor ordinances. And to have those two things put together because of the complaint from one person in the community is really upsetting.
It's really upsetting, and at the worst possible time to be here, when are mobile food units busy? When do they not have time to actually have these conversations in a really rational way? This time. So it's 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 almost tone deaf to to the to the people in this town to the time you make things happen. And I'm gonna call. I'm not even angry at the person making the point. But we're concerned, because this town is having a hard time gaining any traction at all. And then we're faced with this kind of stuff. This is not the process to give people the time. You know, so I I apologize to anybody that's been sort of like, had that angry words due, but that's not the person I but we are fighting for what we feel we try to start with this thing.
That's your first point, I mean, what Don said, if this is what we have, then we're enforcing it, but I mean, this seems even more mean, like it would keep people out, we're like, nope, we're going to enforce this like letter of law, then this to me.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm I'm not saying it's that good.
I'm not saying we should be enforcing that.
Yeah.
I'm saying that shouldn't even, we shouldn't be handing out business licenses to businesses that can't possibly follow our ordinance.
Well, no, that's what I was saying, I'm like, if somebody knew it was coming and this is what we have, then we're gonna shut, I I feel like we're gonna shut down more people than trying to create a new, like more lenient ordinance that allow people to do more business even. Maybe we're like, this is it, or you know, somebody comes and they want to start something like new food cart, it seems like this here is going to be more restrictive than.
I think they're both very restrictive.
This is just crap, like we can think of whatever we want.
Yeah.
You know, like where their input, if they run a business here, if they probably have input, it's, me, I'm like, instead of getting angry, we should work on making this something that sounds good every day. Instead of being like, well, we're just gonna leave this.
Away. So that may have already chased up people, so we need something to bring more business in.
If you if you read, if if we gave you business license for mobile food unit and said, but you have to follow the O H A regulation, that's state law, um, that's over two hundred pages. And there's an additional document, so we could do that, here's two hundred fifty pages of the state regulations that you're gonna have to follow, and they are, they are into the minutia, I mean, there's something about compressed gas bottles, must be security, that's under the wall at all times, such and that and prevent about, you know, this, it's the minutia here, and that's state law. All after. Luckily, it's not part of our code where we have to go and step that down, and we're done with that. There's another element to this too, right? Like, you know, uh, coming into a town like this, you know, you send people down pathways, so like this suggests that you send the person down the pathway of the city administrator, right? City administrator is gonna determine whether the people are following this, right? This sends the people down the pathway of the planning committee, right? What I'm saying with food truck, it's like why, why do these people, why do you necessarily need to go down a pathway like that if it's not? Not, you know, I understand that you need to have some regulations around food truck, but why can't it be an over counter permit, like in walking to city hall, say, hey, I'm gonna have a food truck, I'm gonna be on private property, you know? I'm not gonna, you know, violate any of these rules, then boom, there you go. Because my issue has been in this town, it's like anytime you go down one of those pathways, then you have to really trust that the person you're talking to is on your side. Whether it's on the planning commission, or it's the person that occupies the office. And it's like, someone new coming into this town going down one of those pathways, that's that's sort of like a risky, that's a risky proposition, right? Uh, maybe that person doesn't like the kind of food that you're concerned, I don't know, I'm making ridiculous stuff up. But it just, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, sorry to be pointed, this is certainly, but in favor of reflection. We're a very litigious society. It's very common, so if you go from complex instructions to overly simplifying regulations, it's will leave a lot of evidence in the law and enforcement, which dogs concerned about, right? After the first, totally agree. But simplicity can get worse, not better. That's just like.
And that's very true, and I'm like.
If you're oversimpl.
If you oversimplify, but it should be in a case, and you know, and that's the reason I suggested to Rick that we look at smaller communities and see how they're doing. You know, looking at all the, I mean, all of these got a lot of stuff going, they got a lot of stuff going on, and I don't know why they went down this route here with this much regulation, they probably had their own intent to that. But if you look at some of the smaller communities and see how they can, that it might, and I've looked at some of them. It might be more streamlined, it might make more sense to people like me. You know, um, I think I got really wary of stuff like this with the uptown regulations for the building. Because once this stuff gets in there, because I've been in front of council, and I've asked council to look at those, the pitch. And once something is in there, you really hardly get that. That's the reason I'm worried about all. Inside you talk.
So I do have a question. So just with me and you, probably the the word of complaint that exists, system, how many complaints have been? Like, was this at first, you can raise your like complaint, like that seems like a long time for the community to decide whether the financials are going to fall here. I mean, it's just speed of the thought, but long, you know, but.
I've never seen.
Like, that's a long time, it's like ten years, and we've had them for Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, there may, I mean, maybe in the word list, it says you can't have a a eighth group congregation of A K A ground, well, we haven't had one in forty years, but like, we did have one, that you might wanna force that, I didn't, that's a bizarre example, but just because it has come up, doesn't mean we shouldn't have, let's prevent. Well, I think what, when I hear her question, I'm hearing like, I think this town has bigger fish to fry than this, right? Think of all the problems this town has. These ain't two of them, right? I mean, it doesn't pass the sort of logic, I mean, think of all the problems that we have. Are these the ones that we need to be spending our wheel on? I mean, that doesn't pass any sort of basic test.
Richter Justin.
I was gonna comment, it's impossible to know how many businesses have been prevented by this, because they don't come to restaurants to find that. I can never even solve. Right?
Yeah.
Right, it's like, but there are a lot of businesses. I mean, it's, for example, the, I know it's a different field, but in uh, billing permits, it's about fifty fifty, um, fifty percent of builders will contact finance department to find out what setbacks are fifty one. So, uh, you know, uh, in those situations, unfortunately, they don't find out until they've had space saved for their engineer to draw their plan. And for just to be, and I, because they don't have setbacks, or or you know, something silly like that. So it's about fifty fifty of the businesses, I know, I know we talked, we did it in different industries, but that's in my experience with building that's.
And all I hear is business, business, business. This town is also built on residences, private property, um, I was a little bit offended by hearing how much businesses are put into their property. And as you have property owners, like myself, having also invested in this town. I've invested in this town, I've every year paid property tax to support the town for twenty years. And I think that the ordinances are there. Disrepresenting, not just one group. I know that Oak Ridge is struggling, I know there are new businesses, but do we really need a business that can't support itself? And that goes out of business. We have a lot of this circular problem where businesses will start up, they kind of do it not really go in important ordinances, but whatever, whoever's in charge has let them allow them to do. And then they can't maintain that business. So we have this circular problem. I think that sometimes these ordinances push out or alleviate that in the purpose of business, no one knows that they're going to need to do X, Y, Z. Then, um, and they have the resources to do that, they might stay having businesses that actually are. But I'm offended that we're not looking at what property owners, property problems are bringing to the table. How much of property type, so which is supporting the fifty, you know, not enough, but at any rate. I'm going on, sorry. Um, thank you for listening.
No, and and I think that's why we need some regulation, so we make sure that we're protecting the interests of not only the businesses, but the citizens of the of the town, so it's important we have that, and it's important we have it documented, so a business owner and a resident can pull out the sheet and say, well, here's what this, you know, here's what the rules are, and let's let's add the by by.
Um, in response to you, Ms. Kelly, I think, um, I hear what you're saying, but I would like to say that this is a business district that we're talking about, so that is why the word business is said so much, and um, I realize your home resides there, but we can take your question after I speak.
I'm sorry.
So those have been restaurants for many, many years, right? And and it is a business district, so I think if we were talking about a residential area, it it would be a little different, but in this instance, we really are, the people in the back that have food trucks that are talking, they're all residing in business districts, but um, some of the things I wanted to say is, I I do agree with Poncho's, this this one that's on the board seems too much, and I think this one's too stringent too. Maybe this group can kind of come together and look at it, that we need something that sets a simple baseline, but it needs to be something that's realistic and attainable for new people to come in, I mean, I really hope that everyone on this council agrees that we don't want to prohibit any businesses that are currently here. Industry is part of that. One of my favorite places is, you know, the 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 lot in Bend, I love that place. And you know, it's great for my family, because we can go and we all can pick our own foods, and then we come together and the beer station in Junction City, they're they're great places, and um, I also you know, I know Rick has put, Rick and Lindsay have put in so much money and to come back and after they've spent tens, maybe hundreds of thousands, I don't know how much you've spent, it just is, to me, some of this put blood, sweat and tears into Oak Ridge, not just their business, but into Oak Ridge, it's and Mar and Chad as well, I'm very familiar with their unit, it's just it'll be kind of a slap in the face to me, because they're investing in our community, um. So I guess really what I'm saying is, I do agree that having some type of simplified baseline is important. It is something that we should be handing out automatically when a food truck comer, or food truck business comes in and applies for that um, license, maybe it's something we change our standard policies, that it's just automatically given to them, so that they know what they're up against. Um, but like Poncho said, I really think um, both of them, in my opinion, are are too stringent, especially for a small town, and I would really like to see copies of um, the smaller towns too, just to see what what the differences are, because this is new to me. So, well, other than, the other thing I want to say is, I really do want to promote encourage new businesses to come here and do this thing, it would be really neat to have more food trucks over there, I mean, that's that's great for our tourist industry, that's great for the people that live here, that's just, it's good all around, in my opinion.
Let's go.
So I wanted to address the issue about um, this this bit, this E two, commercial district being a business district. According to our um, ordinance, it is a business residential and light industrial area. So all of those things, in my mind, should be represented. And to say that this is just a business area, it was to me, that's an error. Because that's not how this goes, it's not how this area developed. My house is a hundred years old. It's a farmhouse that's probably that predates all the businesses on the rest of the street. Um, that would be the first thing, and um, it appears that you want to eliminate my property, which is fine, it's for sale, you can do that. But anything else is is really getting into a slippery slope, because um, I have property rights which are being, not being addressed. And that really And that really needs to happen. I need to be a this week. Having a business that's starting at three AM with another business at twelve AM is. Does not follow standard business or state practice. Um. I have for months now, not been able to sleep for months now. I've been for three years. I've been subjected to chemicals that are making me ill. That I've let you know about, that I've had doctors write to you about, and yet that doesn't get addressed. Um, and just thrown under the whole beige vibes. Um. These are real complaints. They are not just imaginary. Um, and I'll tell you something else. Another person called me mentally ill. That's definition. That's definition of character, especially in a plus public meeting, reading something from somebody who's also um. Jaded that I'm mentally ill or whatever is definition. And unless there's a psychiatrist and have spent time evaluating me, you have no reason to say that. And I take exception to it. Maybe you should start using a different. Um, term, you know, something simple like oh. Please. Instead of making definitions that I'm committing more about people. I've been here twenty years. I'm a little tired of being put down. And et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you want to have a business department, this district, buy my house. There you go. You can do whatever you want. You've already decided how you want my property used without asking. Which is another whole issue. Um, but I use my property the way it was bought, the way it was sold, the way it's been used for a hundred years. And I think that there should be some. Um. Well, I can't think of a good word for it, but. It should be respected. Not just having, keeping moving and put up things, do whatever they want. That's not the district. That's not the town. I can move out of town and do what. And um. Deal with it. I moved to a town so that I could have some protection. I moved to a small town to get away from some of the issues that are happening.
No reference to your mental health or anything in that statement.
Um, well, I was singled, I was singled out and it hurt. I don't even know what it was.
Hey, but she was.
Yeah. Oh.
No.
Wasn't necessarily in the savings, but it was implied.
Yeah.
And then it's been made several times.
Are you able to tell us what the zoning is for this area?
The C two commercial district.
Commercial?
Yeah.
Is that ev, is that everything on this street in this block?
Oh, about um. We, yeah.
Okay, so beach. And what studio you want?
Right before the beach.
Okay. So just for definition, could you advise us what commercial entails?
So commercial is, the C two is the commercial uptown district, which is. Which is commercial and residential. Commercial is supposed to be the front twenty five feet of the building, residential on the back or above. So that, so um unfortunately, the answer is um residential in the front and not.
Is what?
And nonperforming.
Okay, so are there hours of operation? Like, can they not be doing anything at twelve AM or?
Outside of the noise ordinance, not um, not an hour, if you know.
Thank you. Sorry, Dom.
Well, that was kind of my exact question, as I was wondering if uh. I was wondering if there was like a line somewhere that separates commercial from residential, assuming that. Assuming that these homes would be in residential, but it sounds like what you're saying is they're not. They're in commercial.
One thing to keep in mind is um zoning started in Oregon seventy five. Um, the current ordinance we have right now is four. I'm not familiar with the four or four, but we did have one um. So the house predates the zoning, so that makes a grandfather nonperforming use.
So in other words, then uh, the house doesn't have to necessarily comply with. This new ordinance because.
It's grandfathered, and even then, um, it's not so much the structure, but the usage inside the structure. I don't, just wanted to clarify that um. It because it. The building looks like a house. The uses in it, if they were to become performing, would be first twenty five feet or for commercially use. The the rest of the back of the building or the upstairs of the building could be for residential, and that's our for our current building.
Like when we bought our house, we knew it was in the uptown district, we knew it was C two ours, this zone of part one, because it's just a residence. We could apply for a change and put in a business or whatever, but we're just residents. We just understand what we're at.
We, yeah, you're our one, you're not much.
Our one, our one's residential.
Right, but I'm saying, we we still knew we were in a commercial district. We knew.
Yeah.
There is, there is a very solid line that separates those two, so uh.
Right, yeah.
Fusion, you can't be both.
But I can't start from a business there and go, oh, okay, I have this.
But the, for instance, the side where the pub is, those are all commercial?
Right. That's all C two.
Okay.
And so then if Nancy were to sell her home. The the buyer would need to be compliant with the current code.
If if the nonperforming use is no longer being used after one year, it would have to go conforming after that. The buyer would recommend if they keep it residential use immediately, it's still. For our ordinance, it is still nonperforming grandfathered. It's still okay. So, but the building was vacated for a year.
Okay.
Then the future users would then have to be performing.
I see. So if we implement any new codes, then.
Sorry.
So if we were to implement new codes. They wouldn't apply the current people that put businesses or homes in.
So we're only moving forward, because that's the goalpost rule. That's the, that's the idea of the goalpost rule, is you're not allowed to move the goalposts. So if we implement new ordinances, in fact, if you see in our ordinance, there's lots of times of a state um. Especially the nonperforming clause, anything that was established and in use prior to this ordinance, prior to the signing of this ordinance, is from then forward.
Okay.
So it's only moving forward. You can't.
But Jake, I don't want to get that soon.
And that's for all ordinances all the time. They don't have to write it into the ordinance.
But there are other cities who do with off ordinances that do change um nonperforming uses have a date, that they can no longer be nonperforming after such and such date, ours is not. So that's, that's for uh for planning agency, whether we see your family, they're all over the board on that one.
Um, okay.
I wanted to. That's Jason before, because I thought I had an excellent, what's, what's the, what's the purpose of having a COVID sign enforcement? So that if we put the regulations in, or say WHOGARDS, nobody ever files to comply, they're fine, right?
No, because they self worry about OHA, who's true regulating, they, they do come and spend.
They come and they ask, they enjoy access to organization, then?
Yeah. Already helped, so we have to. Okay, so yes, we could, we could have a very simple ordinance that just said, you have a food truck, and you got to follow all of the state regulations. So it's, we can do that, but.
So there's a win some time to narrow that as well as we can.
We lost, we lost our view, but there's some wiggle of the month, some issues where cities can. I mean, if we wanted to say all mobile food trucks must be painted red, we we could do that. You could do that. But there, but there's certain things you can't get around. Like, we, we can't say, okay, well, in Oak Ridge, you don't have to have uh a license to operate food truck. We can't say, well, in Oak Ridge, you don't have to have a driver's license. The state supersede on, on it, so.
But you need to make sure that the new regulations are, are a happy, informed decision. Of regulations, just that's our regulation, whatever.
I I don't see us, I don't see us duplicating whatever is already there. There's no need to. So we would just say you will comply with state. And county's regulations, but if there are additional things that might help our citizens, if they have a problem with. The distance of a food truck to a residence or, or, you know, to say, then we can, that's what we should be looking at. Stuff that's not contained in the health regulation. They're concerned about public health. We're concerned about. Citizens versus and and business working well together.
I've had movers that we were in fact working on health regulations and enforcement.
That's all.
We're doing zone, yeah, this, yeah, we we had a consultant come in and look at the zoning regulation, and they're in phase two now, if I'm not mistaken, Jane.
Well, we, we moved into phase two for the updates of the uptown.
Right.
But there are other, there are many, many other updates that I think that we were taking ourselves.
Yeah.
But we're constantly, we're, we're updating our resolution. But as you can see, constantly, but we don't have a lot, something expected of us. Right, and and that would be duplicative, because OHA does that, but Lake County already using the Oregon Department of Health and they come into that.
That's a new process. I don't know what it is.
Real bad.
Yeah, and they can randomly show up to you. So, yeah, like, but there's, I mean, even though it's hundreds, hundreds of pages, there's, there's nothing in here that 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 specifies what hours. Uh, they could be open. That would be up top.
Um, I think this is all really good conversation. I did want to just go back one thing. Tamar started to talk about events. And it made me think of um the events that I coordinate here and I bring in food trucks. These two will be very restricted. Oak Ridge.
Yeah, I want to clarify, but they only the OHA regulations is uh. They're exempted.
Okay.
Mobile food units that are coming to an event.
Uh huh.
Are are exempting a lot of the. More strict regulations.
So why would they be exempt and we wouldn't allow our?
Well, it's not from everything.
Okay.
Uh, just uh, for instance, yeah, they don't have.
Okay, so that.
Station, it can be provided with a bed, so they're.
So already as it stands, a food vendor, the ones that come to the events, you know, they have so many fees that they already have to pay to do events, and Mara could talk a lot more about this. I've had. More to come to a rural town and not make as much money as what they would, you know, in Eugene or other places like that. So just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, we like to have nice events. We like to have food vendors come, right? Because you have food, people come. If you don't have food, it changes your demographics of your event, so something to consider.
Comments, questions?
I'm lying on these kind of things, like how long does it usually take the city to unify and then?
Rick, what are you, what are your plans?
Like, just like the uh, book of Mike. It is, it is a staffing issue, when we have best the the point three to point four FTE planner, so. Um, this is open for next week. After that, next week, I'll start to finalize everything. That'll probably take with with all the other duties we all shared. I'll take a week or two, then it goes back out to, first of all, the local council, just like the last time. Before this is an iterative process, we're gonna, we're gonna go around the circle a couple of times, until we find something that would really work for us all. So it could be each one of them round circles could be a month, could be six weeks.
Yeah, and I I do see a need to stand it up next to um. E O H A requirements and make sure there's nothing duplicative as well.
And and I have been working with uh originally, I sent all the graphs to that, he has forwarded them up the chain.
Yeah.
I'm also working with, uh, sorry, I'm also working with um the Oregon Mobile Food Vending Association, Leah Tucker, I don't know. That we've been involved, she's the executive director. Uh, this has also gone to her. She has sent it back to me with a lot of edits. He gave us a comment that uh it could be the best one in the state. I thought that was nice to hear, but don't tell Albany. That was exactly the amount, um. So.
And that, and then also send it up next to a, as Rick alluded to, a smaller city.
We actually.
And just sit there and figure out what needs to stay, what needs to go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it, you know, the council can help with that. Anything else?
I have two questions.
Um, you know, to be honest, that's uh. For ours, yes, they do. For Oregon, uh, for the question on Zach, um, but yes, they do. Not so much add to vendors, but I did reach out, I know. And we got my phone, we got a phone. To include, because there is a possibility it will affect agents as well, yes.
Okay, and um my other question was the porta potty issue, is that against city code?
The porta potty issue.
Having a porta potty temporarily for a food truck or a business like that, is that, do we have that somewhere where it's actually against city code?
If so, that would be in uh chapter fifty one, which is this is zoning, that would be, that's code ordinances to fifty one. Fifty or fifty one of public works. That's where you find that, and it's pretty sparse.
Okay.
Basically, all you find in there is you can't, can't build your own. Uh, you can't dump the uh contaminants from porta potty into the steward system, so who knows, it not prevents. Uh, normal porta potties, but does prevent people from, again, building your own or dumping the contents of a porta potty into our system.
Yeah, we can, I mean, the city couldn't totally prevent porta potties because porta potties are required by a law, say, law.
Mm hmm.
For instance, with construction, it's like this. So I know.
So that's not a code violation to your knowledge. I'm done thinking.
As a matter of fact, on the state regulations that came out, mobile food units are allowed to use. Porta potties. In the state. So there's nothing uh. Such as you can.
All right. Anything else? I appreciate the, all the input and.
Yes.
I've taken notes, and I know that Rick has a. Any ordinance being adopted or anything like that, so there'll be more opportunity for Republicans as we get closer to it. Nor this is almost that right. Thank you.
Okay, seven four.
All right, adjourned at seven forty eight.
Sorry, what's the section called?
You lost so much of your time tonight. I appreciate it.